Explain my PowerPoint, but it's not working. So. Display.
He's not muted. All right. Sorry. Anyhow, welcome everybody to the Thursday, January 6, 2022, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And unfortunately, still in accordance with AB 361, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually until further notice. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hard to do when. All right, thank you. Suzanne, roll call. It's nice to have you back.
Thank you. Commissioner Bongio.
Present.
Commissioner Mulder.
Present.
Commissioner Levy.
Present.
Commissioner Newman. Okay, there you are. Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mitchell.
Present.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner McCaver.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Looks like we have a full commission, which is nice. And with that, we'll move on to a discussion of remote meetings and discussion of possible adoption of Resolution Number 22-001 authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Humboldt County Planning Commission for the period of January 6, 2022 through February 4, 2022 pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act. So just need a motion on that, right Director? Anybody like to get make a motion on that to extend that?
I still move.
Second, Thomas, thank you Brian. We have a motion, a second, a roll call vote, please.
Right. Commissioner Bongio.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver.
Yes.
Okay, just for clarification, thank you everyone. Who was the first and who was the second?
The first was Thomas and the second was Brian Mitchell.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any agenda modifications? Okay, no modifications. Well, I'm going to make one modification to the meeting anticipating a very large number of callers, particularly on the McKay Ranch subdivision project. I'm going to limit the the time, speaking time to two minutes. We're really backing up on projects and get projects that should have been addressed tonight or probably going to get moved to the next meeting. And so I'm trying to expedite things. So this is going to be my first attempt to make it faster. So we're going to go with two minutes on public comment on non-agenda items as well. So with that, I will open it up for public comment on items that are non-agenda items. And it looks like. Yeah. One caller 7454, I think I know who that is. Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you for my two minutes. Supervisors are doing some things basically which I don't have a problem with two minutes. I would like to say that at this time. I will be trying to cut down my minutes that I speak at supervisors' meetings. As long as supervisors cut down on the time they speak. So that's going to be part of it and get a little more organized there. I strongly recommend you continue to have public comment at the beginning of your meeting. Supervisor Bass has made a mistake. Her statement is that we are now have public comment. No time certain on the supervisor's meeting, any time during the day it could be. So we have to wait and watch the whole meeting to have it. It is told us to happen right before closed session items. That's not a good thing. Another topic regarding the the December 14 meeting where Melanie McCaver had a attempt to recall her is what I referred to it. I have not been able to find out the name of anybody who was anybody complaining. It was constituents. The staff did not know a name, didn't have a phone number, and we don't even know if they were constituents. So I strongly suggest that in the future, anything of that magnitude not be based upon hearsay, that somebody had a complaint and hopefully that will never happen again. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on these two minutes.
Thank you Ken. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on nonish items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. I will close the public comment and we will move to item number F, public hearing for priority housing project. So I'll take a staff report on the North McKay Ranch, item one, the North McKay Ranch General Plan Amendment Zone Reclassification Tentative Subdivision Map. Go ahead.
Oops. Do you see the screen?
Yeah, well.
No.
No.
No. Okay. Just a moment. Sorry.
There it is.
All right. Thank you for your patience. Sorry about that. Thank you Chairman Bongio. I am Dez Johnston, Senior Planner with Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. The project is the North McKay Ranch subdivision project, which involves a general plan amendment, zone reclassification, planning unit development, tentative subdivision map, and a special permit. The project is in the Cutton area of unincorporated Humboldt County. Also in the Eureka Community Plan area. The project site is southeast of the city of Eureka, unincorporated territory. It is 81 acres. The project also includes an offsite water storage tank that would be constructed and dedicated to the Community Services District. That's two and a half miles south of the main project site. This map shows the project site, the 81 acres. It's contiguous with a portion of the the city of Eureka. The 81 acre parcel is a single legal lot made up of seven APNs. The proposal is a mixed use project of single family development, multifamily development, and neighborhood commercial. The proposal would include 320 residential units consisting of 146 single family homes, 174 multifamily homes on two lots, and 22,000 square feet of commercial space on two lots. And 21.73 acres of open space dedicated to the county for trails and recreation. This map shows the layout of the various uses. In yellow is the single family residential. In amber are where the multifamily units would go, and in the red is the neighborhood commercial. The project would be developed in nine phases and built out in 20 years. In order to facilitate the development, a general plan amendment and zone changes required. The site is presently designated by the County General Plan as residential low density, one to seven units per acre, and is in the Eureka Community Plan area. The zoning is now residential one family for the entire site. With combining designations of planning unit development, recreation, and greenway open space. The changes needed would be to the general plan designation of residential low density. That is, a portion of the site would remain residential low density. And the changes would be to residential medium density, seven to 30 units per acre for the multifamily, and to general commercial for the neighborhood retail. And then the zoning change would be to residential one family. That is, a portion of the site would be retained as residential one family. The portions that would change would be to apartment professional or four for the multifamily and neighborhood development and planning unit development overlay for the commercial. The project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and environmental impact report was prepared by Stan Tech Consulting under contract to the county. And Stan Tech is with us this evening, I believe, to describe the findings of the EIR. And that will be Elena Nuneo with Stan Tech. So I will let go of my share screen.
Does any of the commission have any questions or Dez? This time?
I'll also add, sorry, sorry, Chairman, there's more to the presentation. I'm not done, but yeah, by by all means, if you have questions now, you may, but but Stan Tech is available to describe the EIR now.
Okay.
Hi, this is Elena Nuneo. I am the I'm a project manager with Stan Tech Consulting Services. And just want to check if everyone is viewing my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's not a full screen.
Okay, just a second. See if I can get that going. All right, is that a little bit better?
About the same.
Now it is.
Okay.
Now it is.
Okay, now it's full screen. Okay, thank you very much. So again, Elena Nuneo with Stan Tech Consulting Services, and I'm just going to present a little bit on the SEQA process that was undertaken for the North McKay Ranch subdivision project. And so just go over a brief intro, discuss the SEQA purpose and process. Discuss this final EIR a little bit, then review the SEQA impact determinations and summary of alternatives that were considered. And finally, just briefly go over findings and the statement of overriding considerations that are required for the project and open it up for questions on the SEQA portion. And then I believe the presentation will continue with the county right after. So won't belabor this slide too much. Dez gave a very good overview of the project. So this is what we evaluated in the EIR, the project description for the 320 dwelling units and the commercial as well as the undeveloped open space. And as part of the EIR, there are a set of objectives that the project is trying to accomplish. And this project had the following objectives. To comply with Humboldt County Local Agency Formation Commission policy, to create more logical service boundaries, to provide more effective delivery of municipal services by annexing all existing unincorporated islands, zone for development into the HCSD, to ensure new residents receive the same level of service as current residents, ensure the existing level of service, existing service levels to current county residents are not reduced in order to provide service to this new area, and then to promote economic vitality by maintaining and expanding small business and local services for residences. And also to assist the county in meeting housing needs to accommodate forecasted population group. Incorporating parks and open space, including trails into the project design to provide community connectivity in a aesthetically pleasing manner, promoting economic growth through new capital investment for an expanded population and increased tax base, and providing a diversity of housing choices in one development that would cater to various segments of the community, including low cost, single family homes. And the project required the following entitlements, general plan amendment, major subdivision, planned unit development permit, a zoning ordinance amendment, and then a special permit for vegetation removal and work within a stream side management and landline area. In addition, there would be certain other ministerial actions that would be required for encroachment, grading, and building permits. Now, the purpose of SEQA is to identify, disclose, and consider the potential environmental impacts of a proposed discretion, of proposed discretionary actions that lead agencies are considering for approval. So EIRs must be prepared pursuant to the SEQA guidelines. And SEQA requires that state and local government agencies consider the environmental consequences of projects over which they have discretionary discretionary authority before acting on those projects. And I just want to point out, this is the this is from SEQA guidelines regarding standards of adequacy for an EIR. So an EIR should be prepared with a sufficient degree of analysis to provide decision makers with information that enables them to make a decision that takes into account the environmental consequences. An EIR does not need to be exhaustive, but it should provide sufficient information that's reasonably feasible. And disagreement among experts does not necessarily make an EIR inadequate. The EIR should summarize the main points of disagreement among experts. So in this regard, you know, SEQA does not demand perfection, but it looks at making a good faith effort at full disclosure. So we can keep that in mind as we look at the the rest of the SEQA process. And so this project started off in 2019, April 2019, with a notice of preparation issued and a scoping period that was begun. And then that notice of preparation was revised to provide some additional information on impacts that were determined to be less than significant. And so a revised notice of preparation was issued and an additional 30 day scoping period was provided. A scoping meeting was held on June 13, 2019. In May 2020, the draft EIR was issued for public and agency review for the statutory 45 days. The county decided to recirculate two portions of the draft EIR due to changing legislation on how impacts associated with transportation are evaluated with regard to vehicle miles traveled. And so that required recirculating the transportation and land use sections, as well as providing some clarifications to the project description for some offsite improvements with regard to the water tank. So that partial recirculated draft EIR was released on October 18 for another 45 day review period. In December, the county released the final EIR with responses to comments on the draft EIR. And that also included some minor revisions to the EIR. And so that brings us to today, January 6, where your planning commission is being presented this information and you'll be able to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And so just to briefly summarize the final EIR, that should include the draft EIR or revision of the draft. And in this instance, we incorporated the EIR, the draft EIR by reference, but we've also included a section entitled Minor Revisions to the Draft EIR, which includes some, as noted, minor revisions that did not result in any significant environmental impacts. It did not constitute new information and did not alter the conclusions of the environmental analysis. So these are some changes or modifications that were made initiated by the staff for clarification of the document. And then it should also include comments and recommendations received on the draft EIR, either verbatim or in summary. And you'll see in the final EIR, the response to comments, which also includes the list of persons, organizations, and public agencies that commented on the draft EIR. And then we've included the responses of the lead agency to those significant environmental points raised in the review and consultation process. And then as I mentioned, any other information added by the lead agency. So some of those clarifications were added to the final EIR. And just to review the impact determinations. So the draft EIR found that except for greenhouse gases and wildfire, all other resource impacts would be less than significant or less than significant with mitigation. And so to to highlight the the impacts that were determined to be significant, just could briefly go over those. So we have impact GHG greenhouse gas one. The proposed project would generate greenhouse gas emissions either directly or indirectly that may have a significant impact on the environment. And there were a couple of mitigation measures that were identified for this impact. The carbon offsets was identified to respond to construction emissions and the removal of onsite trees. And that was included to so that the project would be consistent with the general plan policy for mitigating for the removal of of those trees. And then the cleaner burning stoves and wood burning devices that would eliminate any wood burning devices in the multifamily residential and require cleaner burning stoves in the single family homes. So while these mitigation measures would reduce operational emissions, they wouldn't reduce the project to less than the 1100 metric ton threshold that was set for the project. So the impact would remain significant and unavoidable. The next set of impacts were all related to wildfire. And so we have wild impact WF dash one. So the proposed project would, due to slope prevailing winds and other factors exacerbate wildfire risks and thereby expose project occupants to pollutant concentrations from a wildfire or the uncontrolled spread of wildfire. And so we have a couple of mitigation measures there. One of those was to prepare and implement a fire safety management plan. And then the second one was the requirement for the 100 foot defensible space. And as kind of described in the final EIR, you know, some modifications were made to that measure to provide additional clarification on the, you know, the flexibility within that measure to kind of increase density in specific areas while to maintain the total unit count within those that bookend of development that was evaluated in the EIR. And or to increase defensible space outside the project site through agreement with the the county. And so there's a, you know, some some options there for the applicant to be able to meet that 100 foot defensible space. But despite those measures, you know, the project would still ultimately locate housing within this wildfire risk area. And so it was determined to still be a significant and avoidable impact. And then similarly with impact wildfire dash two, the proposed project would place would require the installation or maintenance of associated infrastructures that could also exacerbate fire risk and that would result in temporary or ongoing impacts to the environment. And again, we have those same two previous mitigation measures from before and then reference to a mitigation measure in utilities that requires the adequate provision of water supply pressure and storage study. And so again, while these mitigation measures would help reduce that risk, it was ultimately decided that that locating housing within this wildfire risk area would still result in a significant and unavoidable impact. And then wildfire three, the proposed project would expose people or structures to significant risk, including downslope or downstream flooding or landslides as a result of post-fire slope instability or drainage changes. And similarly here, we have the same two wildfire mitigation measures for the fire safety management plan and the defensible space. And then we have mitigation measure from the geology and soil section, which required the site specific geotechnical investigation for development. So this would address potential landslides, flooding, et cetera. And again, while these mitigation measures would help to reduce this risk, it would not reduce it to a less than significant level. And so it was still determined to be significant and unavoidable impact. And in considering a project, you have to also consider project alternatives. And so the purpose of an alternative analysis pursuant to SEQA is to identify, identify feasible options that would attain most of the basic objectives of a proposed project while reducing one or more of its significant effects. And the range of alternatives required in an EIR is governed by the rule of reason. So the EIR must only evaluate those alternatives necessary to provide a reasonable choice. The alternative should be shall be limited to those that would avoid or substantially lessen any of the significant effects of a proposed project while meeting most of the underlying project objectives. And we had three project alternatives that were considered. We have the no project alternative. So the no project alternative assumes, and and this is a statutorily required alternative. And the no project alternative assumes no additional development would occur to the project site. And so this alternative would avoid the significant and unavoidable impacts to greenhouse gases and wildfires. But it would not meet any of the project objectives or meet housing needs, increase the tax base, or provide a diversity of housing choices in the county. The site plan redesign would provide this would involve increasing the size of the lots located on the project boundary adjacent to North McKay Forest, and it would provide that 100 foot defensible space. It would require a reduction of 10 single family dwelling units and a reduction of 14 small lot, single family dwelling units, and an extension of Redwood Street and Arbuda Street. And this would result in a less than significant impact to wildfire, but would still result in significant and unavoidable impacts to greenhouse gases. And this would also lessen the severity of other impacts, including those associated with agriculture and forestry resources, air quality, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and transportation. And this alternative would meet all the proposed project objectives, although to a lesser extent because it would not develop the same number of dwelling units. And then
Can I ask something that you just said, Elena? I'm going to make sure I heard it and understood. What were you saying on this B alternative two about improvements to Redwood and Arbuda Streets? What what did you say? I just, it was real quick.
I'm sorry, it would require an extension of Redwood Street and Arbuda Street.
Just like it is already proposed.
Yes. But it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
But you were going to say something else.
Oh, no, just that it requires those reduction in those dwelling units.
Okay, thank you.
And and the that alternative specifically, you know, just kind of spelled out where that redesign, where that redesign happened. So it didn't provide any flexibility as far as altering density and any other. as far as altering density in any other particular location to maintain unit count. So a little different than that mitigation, the way the other mitigation measure for wildfire reads. And then alternative three is the reduced density. And this would modify the existing proposed project site plan to include the elimination of specific lots so that it could include that 100 foot defensible space buffer. Again, addressing the wildfire impact. And then a reduction in the total amount of single family and multifamily residential units to reduce operational mobile source greenhouse gas emissions. So addressing the significant impact for greenhouse gases. And so while this alternative would result in less than significant impacts relative to wildfire and greenhouse gas emissions, it, when compared to the significant and unavoidable impacts of the project, it would, it would not meet, it would meet the objectives, but to a lesser extent. And in addition, this alternative would lessen the severity of other impacts related to agriculture and forestry resources, air quality, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and transportation.
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Um, so I know that this project has been studied and thought about for, I believe, decades. And one thing I wanted to bring up is that for the greenhouse gas emissions, I, I'm assuming you're talking about the additional traffic and car trips here. But we're hearing that, you know, within the next, you know, five to 10 years that, that most car companies are going to be using, you know, electric cars or, or, or cars that would reduce, at least in part, greenhouse grass, gas emissions. How far into the future of technology can we consider when we're looking at what might be a a problem or an impact, you know, in the first five years, but then will be reduced? What's the appropriate way to look at that?
Well, we do know that the fleets are getting cleaner and that, that the electric vehicles are, you know, increasing in numbers. And the goal is, you know, to have the all-electric in the future. But when we evaluated the project, we, we used our standard air quality modeling tools. It's a California emissions estimator model, Cal E mod. And it has in it, you know, an anticipated fleet mix of vehicles. And it currently, you know, it, it, it doesn't account for like a larger portion of electric vehicles, which would kind of lead to some speculation and, well, we don't, we, we don't have that. We don't speculate. So we're, we're taking a very conservative approach in estimating the impact of the project. You know, assuming that these, this fleet mix, which is primarily all fossil fuel based, is, you know, going to be there at the build out of the project. And so with, you know, realistically, we are presenting a conservative estimate of the motor vehicle emissions. I don't know if that, that answers your question.
May I ask how recently that vehicle mix was updated in the state's tool that you're utilizing?
So the model was recently updated in 2020, but it, it is based off of the Air Resources Board's future projections. And, and they're not, it's, it's not really reflective of where they want to go in the future. It's, it's, it's sort of, it's based, it's kind of difficult to explain. It's based off of attainment planning. So they take information that's used on a air basin level and these, and the different vehicles that may travel through a region to come up with this fleet mix of, of vehicles. So I guess the answer is they haven't really accounted for this move to electric. And so what we've presented is, you know, is the, the best available information that the Air, California Resources Board has provided for inclusion in this air quality model. And it, and it likely is a conservative estimate.
Thank you.
Let's try and keep our, let Elena finish her presentation, then we'll ask questions at the end if we can to expedite things.
Okay. And so since we've identified some significant and unavoidable impacts that triggers a couple of things that are required as part of the SEQA process for the county to issue findings and a statement of overriding considerations. And I'll cover each of those briefly. And so Public Resource Code, Section 21002, provides that public agencies should not approve projects as proposed if there are feasible alternatives or feasible mitigation measures available, which would substantially lessen the significant environmental effects of such projects. And that the, the procedures required by this division are intended to assist public agencies in systematically identifying both the significant effects of proposed projects and the feasible alternatives or feasible mitigation measures, which will avoid or substantially lessen such significant impacts. And the, these, this Public Resource Code also provides that in the event specific economic, social, or other conditions make infeasible such project alternatives or such mitigation measures, individual projects may be approved in spite of one or more significant effects thereof. So before approving the project, agencies must adopt findings for which any I R are required. For each significant environmental effect identified in an E I R, the approving agency must issue written findings reaching one or more of three possible conclusions. So one, that changes or alterations have been required in or incorporated into the project, which avoid or substantially lessen the significant environmental effect as identified in the final E I R. Two, that changes or alterations are within the study or jurisdiction of another public agency and not the agency making the finding. Such changes have been adopted by such other agency or can and should be adopted by such other agency. And three, specific economic, legal, social, technological, or other considerations make infeasible the mitigation measures or project alternatives identified in the final E I R. And I believe before you, these findings are included in the resolution of the Planning Commission Resolution Number 22. You can refer to page 16 of the staff report. So that brings us to the statement of overriding considerations. So again, Public Resource Code, Section 2100 and SEQA Guideline, Section 1500. The County of Humboldt's approval of the project will result in significant adverse environmental effects that cannot be avoided, even with the adoption of all feasible mitigation measures. And there are no feasible alternatives that would mitigate or substantially lessen the impacts. And so overriding considerations. One, the, the approval of the project is important for meeting the counties. I'm sorry, the, the overriding considerations identified by the county are as follows. Approval of the project is important for meeting the county's housing needs and complying with state housing law. Two, approval of the project provides important economic growth. And three, the project would function as an extension of the Cutton community to the east, provide substantial additional open space to county residents. Approval of this project will contribute to a logical and orderly expansion of the public recreational purposes to serve the community. And you can refer to, again, to that planning commission resolution and page 24 of the staff report for further information. And so that does bring me to questions on the SEQA process.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Thomas, do you have your hand up?
So minimize your screen.
Oh, let me stop, sorry.
Thank you.
What I heard right off the get-go, unavoidable impacts are okay. If, if I heard that clearly, it's, it's not, it's okay to be not perfect and have unavoidable impacts as long as it meets that section 210002. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, you know, under SEQA, you are, you can have significant environmental effects as long as you've identified what your overriding considerations are for them. And you've, and in those findings, you've identified that you've, you know, adopted feasible mitigation measures to address them or identified why certain measures are not feasible.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the last, in lot 207, or however this is enunciated, Sheriff Hansel was requesting that a sheriff's substation be built there and near the end of this packet I was reading. Would that affect the park aspect of this or the open spaces? If that was a future plan of the counties?
No, Des, did you want to cover that?
Actually, I wasn't aware of that request for the substation. So Mr. Ford, do you know about it?
I know the sheriff
Email from like 2018.
In, in this area. But I was, didn't know that there was a specific lot that was called out for replacement of that substation. I apologize for that. Let, let me look at that, Mr. Commissioner Mulder, and, and we'll get back to you on that.
Any other questions? Mike Newman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I was just looking through and I didn't hear much about traffic studies and that sort of thing. I remember back in 2014, when I was on city council that when the K track was going to be changing hands to the county, that there was talk. And part of the resolution, I believe, on the support from the city of Eureka to the county for getting the four and a half million dollar monies coming in, was to have a plan for traffic design to possibly go around and help alleviate the congestion there in Cutton. What is, where, where is that in here? I didn't see much of anything there on that.
So perhaps I could step into that and, and respond. The original traffic study was done before S B 743 took effect. And it identified that seven intersections needed to be improved. And the traffic I, study identified that all those were needed as mitigation, but that's well beyond the proportionate share of this project. So we took a look at what really was the proportionate share and, and that was the rationale for recirculation of the E I R. And since the E I R was being recirculated after S B 743, which requires vehicle miles traveled to be the focus of analysis, that changed. But we still have a general plan policy requiring that L O S C be maintained. So you'll notice that in the revised recirculated E I R that we analyze V N P in the traffic analysis and then analyze the general plan policy for L O S in the land use section. We identified that two intersections would be improved. The proportionate fair share of the project was to, to improve the equivalent of two intersections. And so those are conditions of the project. You'll also recall that this is in the area of the Martinsville Interceptor, which required the traffic fees be implemented for development in this area. Unfortunately, neither the city nor the county have adopted those fees. So the appropriate mitigation is to assign proportionate share, fair share for improvements to the traffic network. Can I see that Mr. Bronkle's hand is up? And I will yield to him.
Thank you, Director Ford. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to add a couple of things to what Director Ford had already mentioned. One thing that you'll notice when looking at the tentative map is that Arbuda Street extends to the northerly boundary of the subject property. And that is to facilitate a future general plan circulation route that would eventually work its way up to Harris Street.
Excuse me, would that be able to be put up on the screen?
Yes, it'll just take me a minute to be able to navigate for that.
It would be very helpful, thank you.
While I'm getting things navigated to, perhaps, if there's other questions, they could be addressed by others while I get myself situated for this.
The same plan does show that extension, if that's all you need to see. And I've got that on my PowerPoint. Is that, is that what you need, Commissioner Newman? Just to see that extension.
I'm just trying to make it easy on the public to what is being described by Mr. Bronkle.
Why don't you put that up, Des?
Okay. Okay, do you see it? Do you see the image?
Yes. Perfect.
Yes, so this is the extension.
It's on the right-hand side of the screen. You'll see the Arbuda Street being extended and terminating along the purple line there. So that's to help facilitate a future general plan connection. This subdividers doing what their responsible share is, which is to help facilitate that future connection, but not necessarily build that entire future connection. So this is teeing up for a long-term solution to help improve traffic in the greater Cutton area. One of the other comments that was brought up was open space lot 207. That lot is proposed to be, come part of the community forest property. The Public Works Department is not necessarily interested in that particular piece. We haven't had a chance to walk it on the ground to see how beneficial it would be for inclusion in the community forest. So the interest of the sheriff in wanting all or part of that is certainly something that can be entertained without detract away from the community forests at all for the project.
Is, is it possible to put a better design on the map there with the streets label? There's, this is just, just the development right here. What we're talking about is that extension. It, it doesn't show really on this map.
I think I've got the right image to, to share with you on that. Let's see if I can pull this off.
I think you had your streets backwards.
Vincent, put it in the dishwasher. Thank you.
I'm having some technical difficulties, unfortunately. Let's see if this works. Did the image come up correct on the screen?
Yes, you've got the geo look at it, right?
There should be an aerial image with
Right, satellite view.
Yeah.
There was a better image that does have streets labeled. I think it was page 12.
My image, I believe, has the streets, except for the, the proposed streets, they're not labeled in there. The diagram that I put up on the screen shows the greater circulation map for the South Eureka area, where you could see Walnut Drive, W Street, Del Beer. And it shows Arbutus Street extending out from Walnut Street, and then curving up to the north. And then the piece that's shown in blue is the, the future stub that would be for the general plan circulation route.
So, on phase one, isn't that Manzanita that is where it goes into?
Because of the terrain, the general plan circulation route would not tie back into Manzanita. The first phase on Manzanita is a handful of houses on a cul-de-sac.
And that is phase one, correct?
Correct.
That's the apartments.
Phase two is the apartments. And the apartments are, are Arbutus Street.
Three single-family residents.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. Mike, did you have any other questions for him, since you got the map up, and then Peggy has her hand up after you? Okay, thank you. Peggy, go ahead.
I have some questions about the recreational areas. Is anything other than, I'll ask a couple of questions, but are, is there any other recreational areas proposed within trails and forested areas? And I think I read that it's going to be deeded to the county, but has the county committed to maintaining this area, maintaining the trails and the safety? Because sometimes those types of places can kind of be, become dangerous and not very recreational. With this many units, it would appear that you might need to have other types of recreational facilities, like small parks for the, you know, young kids. I've seen, you know, very small park areas developed into subdivisions even, you know, smaller than this. And back to the first question, is the county committed to building the trails? Are you building the trails as part of the development? Or are you just turning the land over to the county, and, you know, it's up to them to figure out how they're going to do it?
The Ted of the map shows a series of lots that have the 200 number range within them. Those are the proposed open space lots.
I'm having a hard time reading the numbers. I've got my magnifying glass out, and I still can't read them because they're kind of small and they kind of are jumbled. So, maybe if you could point.
Are you able to see my cursor on the screen?
Yes, yes.
This is open space lot 207. This is the one that the sheriff is interested in. And mouse keeps disappearing. Public Works has not had a chance to go ahead and look at this one. It's not contiguous to the community forest. This diagram is a slightly older map. Let me switch.
I could step in a little bit. Commissioner O'Neil, one of the things that needs to be understood here, and maybe you're aware of this, and I don't, just want to make sure, is that this is contiguous to the McKay Forest. And so, there is a backbone trail network that is being completed as part of this project that the county is undertaking. So, what these open space lots will do is allow for the completion of the trail through the McKay Forest, and then also access to, to the McKay Forest from this portion of, of Eureka and Humboldt County. So, these are really critical components of the county's use of the McKay Forest, allow citizen enjoyment of the McKay Forest, and use of the McKay Forest.
I actually lived on S Street, so I kind of real familiar with this area, but my question was more to, has the county committed to developing this, or is it just something, you know, that we are hoping is going to happen in the future?
I would say the county is very committed to developing this.
And they've said that in writing?
Yes, the, the county is committed to developing the backbone trail within the community forest. This project is going to help get that backbone trail completed. In addition to the backbone trail in the community forest, there are three or four locations at which trailheads would lead from the roads that the subdivision would build and tie into the community forest backbone trail, and the project is conditioned for the applicant to go ahead and construct these trailheads and tie-in points. But the backbone trail is entirely constructed and maintained by the county. Once these trailheads are developed, they would be conveyed to the county, and the county would then maintain them.
So, what is that big space that looks like a D, shaped like a D sort of? What is that right now?
That is the ball field, the, the Cotten ball fields. There's four ball fields, and when it's not being used for baseball, it's used for soccer. There's a small little playground on the property as well. So, there is a lot of recreational uses adjacent to the project site.
I couldn't tell what it was, but that would make a lot of difference, because it's so close.
Chair, if I could, if there's no more questions on the, the CEQA analysis, we're kind of delving into the project right now. We do have some more information to present as part of our presentation.
Wouldn't let me unmute, sorry. I think that's a good idea. Let's let the staff finish their presentation, and then we can get into all these. We also have the applicant with us, and so let him comment as well when we get to that point, so.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. This is Des Johnstall. Return to my PowerPoint.
Thank you.
And thank you, Alina Nuneo, for your presentation. So, in addition to some information in the finally IR that, that adds to the draft IR, there's a, a comment from CalFire that that's going to result in a change in wording that would be added to the errata, and Director Ford would like to address that himself. Director, would you like me to stop sharing?
Yeah, please, stop sharing. Thanks, Des. So, one of the purposes of the finally IR and the noticing period for the finally IR is to allow responsible and trustee agencies to have an opportunity to look at that. We did that, and we received comments back from CalFire that expressed concern about whether or not there was a timber conversion permit on the property, and whether there was a timber harvest plan. And what we found in terms of, in working with CalFire and discussing this, is that the finally IR slightly mischaracterized the circumstances. The circumstances are this. There was a timber conversion plan issued in 1995 as part of the development of the Eureka Community Plan Area. That has been in place since that time, but there has not been, well, let me retract that. There has been a timber harvest plan that was approved in 1998, but that has since expired. So, the circumstances that we're currently in is that there is the ability to convert this from timberland. It has rolled out of TPZ, which would allow the harvesting of the trees, but contrary to what the EIR says, they, the applicant would need to get a timber harvest plan to allow that to occur. And so, we have provided an errata that modifies the final EIR to reflect revised comments to the to Cal, to CalFire. I'm going to share my screen here real quick and just show that. And so what I hope you're seeing is a Word document here that just identifies the, the minor changes. Oops, that's the whole finally IR. I apologize. Well, maybe I'm not going to bring that up. I'm sorry. But the, the errata basically just clarifies that there is a timber conversion permit in place, and that a timber harvest plan will be needed, and a condition is proposed to require that as part of each phase, that any tree removal be preceded by having an adequate timber harvest plan issued by CalFire. And then, I'd just like to say that one of the things in terms of the overriding considerations, this is a project that is identified within our housing element, within our arena analysis, as providing 320 units, as being important for providing 320 units. So, this is a project that offers a, a range of housing types from multifamily to a small lot, 3,000 square feet, to market, to above median. And so, within one development, there is the opportunity to address many different housing needs. Some of those housing needs are not currently represented in the inventory of housing that we've got in Humboldt County. So, I, I don't want to be an advocate for the project, but I do want the planning commission to be thinking about what this really offers in terms of meeting our overall housing goals. I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Director Ford.
Thomas, do you have your hand up? He's getting this up. Is there?
I was going to wait till they're done with the presentation, if that's okay, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're just about done. Do you see the slide?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so the, the applications include a general plan amendment and zone, zone change that would need to go to the board, and so all entitlements go together to the board. So, we're asking the commission for recommendation to the board supervisors. And our recommendations are that the commission recommend that the board of supervisors certify the environmental impact report for the North McKay Ranch subdivision project, and adopt a statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and make all required findings for approval of the general plan amendment, the zone reclassification, tentative subdivision map, and the planning of development, and the special permit, and to approve the North McKay Ranch subdivision project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. That concludes the SAF report.
Thank you, Des. Now, Thomas, ask your question.
Okay, just wanted to double-check on A. Should it be certified, the amended final EIR, just because there is some little language, or that was being said earlier?
That's a great question, and it's, it's to certify the final EIR with the errata.
Okay. And then, my second question.
I should add, sorry, thank you, and, and also the, the revised condition of approval regarding the CalFire and the timber harvest plan that Director Ford described.
Okay. And then, last question. Is there any leeway for the commission to relax any road standards, or sidewalk standards, or anything like that, and make them bike paths instead of curbing gutter? Is that outside of our allowance?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Bronkle on, on that.
This project is located in a urban area, and urban level improvements are what are, is what's needed in urban areas to serve those sorts of communities. The department often receives complaints from people living in urbanizing areas, that there are issues with the lack of urban amenities. So, for instance, you have a rural road, a two-lane road without bike lanes or without sidewalks. As more and more growth occurs in those areas, the demand for non-motorized transportation such as bike lanes and sidewalks increases. And it's very frequently that the, the department receives requests to have those amenities added to, to those projects. Because this project is within an existing urban area, it's appropriate for it to continue to have those urban amenities along with it, in order for the community to fully serve the needs of all the residents that will now be living in this new community.
Okay, thank you for that.
Hey, yes, you're next.
It are, it might be in there, and I missed it, but are any of the sites designated for low-income housing? I know in McKinleyville, when we approved that subdivision, I think five of them were set aside for low income. Is that the case here too?
I think I'll need Mr. Kramer to respond to that.
There, there are not any regulatory requirements for low income at this point. One of the things that the multifamily parcels provide the opportunity for is subsidized housing with density bonuses. And so, under those circumstances, where there would be subsidies involved, the, there would be obligations to maintain them at affordable rents for a period of time. And I know you understand that.
So, the developer in McKinleyville just voluntarily agreed to do that? He wasn't required to do that?
The, well, there's a couple of developments in McKinleyville.
One on S Street, off of S Street, I think, and not, is it S Street? Yeah, the one over by the movie theater.
Commissioner O'Neil, that was a requirement of the sale of the property from the school district. So, the school district required that. So, the school district required that. It wasn't actually a code requirement or a state requirement.
I mean, because they could be small lots and it sounds real, you know, like you're affordable, but doesn't necessarily mean they will.
So, I have a couple of questions, I don't see other hands up, so I'll go. I'm not really sure what the concerns that CDFW has with this. This property, and Mr. Kramer can confirm this, but I believe it was logged by, less than five years ago, I would say, about that, give or take. So, why does there have to be a timber harvest, another timber harvest done? It seems like it would be just a grading permit at this point. I mean, there might be a few scragglers trees left. I walk through this almost daily when the weather's good and there's not much to log there anymore. I mean, it's-
I apologize if I said CDFW, I meant CAL FIRE.
I meant CAL FIRE, no, you were correct, I said, I said the wrong entity.
So, we, it's really, I think, a matter of making sure that the conversion that's been issued and the timber harvest plan are done in accordance with the Forest Practices Act. And Curtis, or Chris Curtis with CAL FIRE is here to answer any questions that you might have on that.
Okay, well, maybe he can chime in on that one. And then, I have some concerns that maybe you can clear up what the, if the county does take over these areas for trails and do they have plans, I didn't see it in there, but for maintaining these trails and more so than maintaining them, policing these trails. We're starting to get, in this area, homeless camps. I wouldn't say homeless camps, I would say homeless individuals that are using the area. I haven't seen camps, so that was the wrong word to use. But being somebody who uses these, this area my entire life, I have large concerns regarding the policing of it, more so than, than the, whether the trails will get built or not. I, so that's my concern, maybe you could address that.
I may need to defer to Mr. Bronckel beyond what I'm going to say, but I think the primary answer to that is that all maintained public property, all county property runs into those issues and who's using the property. And so, that becomes part of the operations plan. And in this particular case, the applicant has agreed, is agreeing to provide access and public access to those locations. And one of the things that often happens with increased public access, oftentimes those areas is an attractive place to having out and hide.
I certainly don't want to create any more headache for Mr. Kramer on this. I'm not against the project in any way, shape, or form. But I, I've, and I've been vocal about it, that I've had problems with the community for us since the time that the supervisors took it on because they didn't address the policing issue of it then. And now, we're going to add to it. And I think that maybe they're two separate, completely separate issues, but it needs to be addressed. It's just like law enforcement needed to be addressed in the cannabis issue, but we said we couldn't talk about that. And I'm not going to back off of it as I did with cannabis. So, this one's in my neighborhood and it's something that's, you know, important and it needs to be addressed. So, it's something I will keep bringing up. So, I see we have Mr. Curtis with us from CAL FIRE. Would you like to say anything, sir?
Yes, what we, what we discovered is that the 2017 timber harvest plan was implemented for revenue, to produce revenue, to help with the subdivision costs. But that harvest plan was for timber management and not for conversion. And so, when we convert timberland from growing trees to some other use, where we conduct timber operations, that also allows for cutting and selling the trees. We have to get a timberland conversion permit and a timber harvest plan that is for conversion. And so, the current harvest plan that's, that's open, is still approved and active, is not a timber harvest plan for conversion. And that's basically our comment. They've got the, the wrong vehicle to, to cut down the trees for conversion. Does that make sense?
I guess, so basically, they checked the wrong box on an application is what I, I'm hearing and-
Well, so, at the time that they submitted the timber harvest plan in 2017, the department answered some public comments about subdivision. And it wasn't very well disclosed in the harvest plan that, that there was a subdivision in planning for this. Our reaction to that was to, to say, hey, you've got a timber harvest plan for timber management, but not for conversion. You haven't identified conversion as your harvest strategy. And the difference is you have to meet stocking and continue to encourage trees to grow in a timber management type of timber harvest plan. But where you have a conversion, you're authorized to cut down the trees and not have to meet stocking afterwards. So, the timber harvest plan was slightly out of scope. We thought from the background that was going on, we conditioned the timber harvest plan so that it wouldn't be used as a mechanism for conversion. Because we were assured that was not the objective for that, that timber harvest plan. So, that's, that's where we are, we've got it, we've got an active timber harvest plan. But again, it needs to be a harvest plan that is designed for conversion, that authorizes that, it doesn't have to have post-harvest stocking levels, doesn't have to reforest the property.
Okay, is that a big deal to convert over to that, I guess?
It requires a substantial deviation, which has a review period and a public comment period. And so, it's not a, it's not a insurmountable, you know, condition. The harvest plan can be amended to a timberland conversion, timber harvest plan. Or the applicant could choose to submit a new harvest plan.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike Newman, you have your hand up.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I had one other question and then a observation. Under the staff report, page eight, under circulation, it's talking about traffic study and about the LOS delay, the level of service delays and that. And that it was determined that there were two intersections that needed help with this level of service deterioration. And I didn't hear exactly what those intersections were or if they were mentioned, it went by too quickly and I didn't write it down. That's my number one question. Then I had another question on the staff report on page six over proposed land uses and the overall view there. So, the first one is about the two intersections exactly that would be impacted and improved with, I believe, traffic signals, is that correct?
That is correct. Mr. Bronckel, would you describe the intersection improvements?
There are two intersections. Backing up, there were several intersections that were studied for the project. And they were analyzed and the amount of impact that this proposed project would have on those intersections was calculated. And it had varying percentages of impact on, on different intersections. And when you add up the total percentage responsibility of the project, it results in roughly 200%, which equates to two intersections. The two intersections that had the greatest contribution of traffic from the subdivision is the Walnut and Hemlock intersection, which is where Walnut tees into Hemlock, right there where the reservoirs are. And then, the second intersection is on W Street where it intersects Hodgson and Chester Street. So, those are the two intersections that are proposed for signalization as part of this project.
Is the Hodgson and Chester, since I'm not looking at the map right off, is that over by the school?
Yes, it is, it's at the corner of the school.
Okay. So, then my other question on the staff report under the proposed land uses residential, it states in here 81 acres, approximately 174 multifamily units on 19 acres, 50 small lot, single-family units, which in parentheses says includes 18 affordable single-family units on approximately six hour, six acres, and 96 single-family lots on approximately 32 acres. And then, it goes on about multifamily units, which are the apartments on the western portion of the project site. So, these are not truly affordable housing? Or what's the term used in this section about? Because I had just heard that there weren't, were not any affordable housing units.
And what we were trying to convey is more affordable by designing.
Okay.
Rather than subsidized.
Okay, so not subsidized, is what, yeah, okay. And I understand that because then what it does is open up more housing otherwise in the rest of the city and county. All right, thank you.
Thomas, you have your hand up.
So, just a question, after finding out, you know, it's good to find out CEQA, it's unavoidable, avoidable things are okay to have in a project. If this project wasn't approved, what would that do to our housing element? And I think it was like the RENA numbers or something like that or whatever. I can't remember the term, but what would that do to us as a county as a whole? Would the state would just take over our funding or?
Yeah, as the Chair just mentioned, we'd lose grant funding. But in seriousness, the 320 units over, I think, the next eight-year period of 1,400 units. So, this is the biggest chunk of units that we have in our vacant land inventory. If this project weren't approved, it would still be available for development. But I do want to say that you just can't turn around and, and build a new project. Obviously, this has a EIR on it. It's been in process for a long, long time.
Okay, that's, that's kind of where I was at. I just, it was good to hear the CEQA analysis earlier on and it's good to hear that. And by design, I agree that it has a good mix of different housing affordabilities. And I think the biggest thing that people are stuck that I hear on is affordable housing and that really just means subsidized. This project isn't subsidized, so it's not, from what I'm reading. So, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Yeah. If, if I could, I would add affordability is a relative scale.
Yeah.
And, and so, truly affordable, it nearly has to be subsidized anymore. But then, even apartments at 16 to 20 units an acre are more affordable, even though they may not be truly affordable to low-income families. And so, even a market rate apartment complex is a desperately needed housing type in Humboldt County.
No, I would agree, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Noah.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I guess, Des, if after the circulation and recirculation of the EIR, there were extensive comments, both from members of the public and from a lot of agencies and groups and nonprofits. And I'm wondering if there were any specific project changes that were made to the, to the design of the project in response to those comments received on the EIR?
Yeah, so, you're right, we did. And a lot of them were consistent with each other. And we, we met with staff of council of governments and got some good advice. But in the end, most of what we were hearing was outside the project and outside the reach of the project. And so, either, either that, that, that we couldn't do it, like, like, for instance, bike lanes down by, by the zoo in the city. There just isn't a plan in place to collect fees for that kind of thing. And so, the council of governments is looking toward that, but there isn't one yet. So, I think the answer is no, but, but maybe John can offer something there too.
I think one of the things I would add is if you look at, there's about four conditions in there that require that bike lockers, bike racks be shown on the development plan to be recorded on the property. So, future inheritors of the property would recognize that this is being focused on being more bike-friendly. There is a requirement for a transit stop to be put in the commercial center. And, and so, there has been a real effort to upgrade the alternative forms of transportation associated with this development. Mr. Johnson, looks like he wants to say some more.
Thanks, John. You actually covered what I was going to say. The only thing I would add is that after meeting with the Humboldt County Association of Governments, we did also add a condition that would result in pedestrian-oriented timing of the signals. And, and you know, if you have any questions about that, I'm sure Bob Bronckel could, could speak to that a little bit more, but she would find that in the public works conditions as well. And so, we did, there were no changes necessarily made, but we did take a lot of those comments seriously and tried to address them through conditions of approval.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that.
One more thing that I will add, in the public works requirements, you'll see that half of pedestrian travel to the market has been accounted for in terms of requiring improvements, so.
All right, so, we need to get some public comment here. Mr. Kramer, is there anything you'd like to say before we go to public comment? Usually, I'd recommend you wait till after public comment and then, but is there anything you'd like to?
You know, I'll kick off and just, I've got a few things to say and then we'll, we'll put it out for public comment. Thank you, Alan. And good evening, Commissioners. My name's Kirk Kramer, many of you know me, but we haven't all worked together. With my family and Kramer Properties, we are the owners of the property and pushing this forward for some sort of resolution. As many of you know and some of you don't, I've been in Humboldt County and working my career for over 40 years. Got a fair amount of experience in multifamily, commercial and construction development. We really feel that this is an incredibly important project and we'd like to do it. And we do have the capacity in our family and the, and the company to pull this project off. It's no small feat. We're in the precipice of a financially responsible project that needs to make commercial sense. There are a lot of new state mandates that keep coming out over the last decade or more that are making-
that are making, you know, construction in Humboldt County and elsewhere in California practically impossible. In the end, if it doesn't make sense, it's just not a project we can do. So we, this one is a challenge. We've been on this project since two thousand and four, so I'm seventeen, eighteen years in. Three traffic studies, EIR, multiple environmental reviews. You know, in the end, if we can't get it done, we've tried our best. John and I, I got to tell you, we have a good working relationship and and he's got a job to do, but he's been in his department of of recent, have been very constructive and responsive to the process. So I don't want to gloss over that. They understand they have a job to do. We've got a lot of growth coming to Humboldt County. And we can put our head in the sand or we can start figuring out ways to actually accomplish housing that's desperately needed. Humboldt State to name one, you know, the Fish Farm to name two. There's just a lot of things happening. They're bringing people here. So with that, I'd like to share a screen. If I could. And I think we're going to do this. So to give you a little history on this project, this is the original proposed vesting map from RRM that was representing Louisiana Pacific. And in those days, the park in the middle, the D, as it was commented on earlier, was considered Merlot Field. This was a ninety-three acre site and about ten of that, maybe twelve of that is the park. And it was basically designed as a complete project. But the park ultimately went first because of the difficulties, complexities, even then of pulling off this project. But as you see, it was a two hundred and forty-nine lots residential development. Not a lot of exciting things going on, all single-family residential. There is view lots and such, but that was basically what was designed in the early nineties. Then Bob Morris came into ownership on it. He was a forester for LP in the day and and ultimately bought the property and did some more forestry on it. And then ultimately proposed to this commission a, trying to remember the number, fifty lot, large lot, fifty large lot, single-family residential development. Again, smaller lots around the ball field, but large lots around the perimeter. He felt it was the, it was probably the most economic sensible project to do, but ultimately got denied at the planning commission late eighties, early two thou, late nineties, early two thousands. I don't have the exact dates on that. But was turned down. And I believe then, and I still believe now, that there was a higher, you know, a more dense project. It was really something this project needed. It is an infill project. It's surrounded by development. And it's it's ultimately the beginning of a more development that will ultimately occur with the growth that's coming our way out the Walnut Corridor. We came into ownership in the two thousand and four era and somewhere in there. And we dusted off the maps and came up with a two hundred and fifty lot subdivision that was mixed lot sizes, mixed uses, not mixed uses, but small lot and large lot. And really brought landscape, land use architect into the realm or into the process and then ultimately developed what is largely what is in front of you tonight. We've got small lot residential, we've got large lot, not large, but I mean, there's certainly more view lot oriented and higher-end homes on the periphery of it. Then there's eight parcels that would accommodate the multifamily pieces. And then we've put in a small piece around this phase two, two commercial lots. Don't really have any plans for that, but just felt like it could be a good use of some space. And this this map kind of denotes the zones, which you saw earlier, and the red being the commercial and then the darker orange being the multifamily residential. We we are looking at low-income housing component piece and working with a company similar or or Danco, something like a Danco that would do the subsidized market rate and subsidized affordable housing. We've been in talks with them, but we just, we have nothing really to talk about. And to be quite honest, don't know when we will. I mean, we're we're going through a process now that is unfolding and it seems like we're getting closer to at least an entitled project. But as I mentioned earlier, there is a lot of work to be done to get this project turned over into bricks and sticks. This is the map that kind of gives you more of a site plan that shows multifamily up in the left-hand corner, basically multifamily on the entryway to the site off of both Arbutus and Redwood. And then the single family ends up getting pushed out to the into the deeper section of the development. There is some also some multifamily right here as well. And here and also here. These were some examples of the small lot developments that would be a single-family, a single-story in nature and two to three bedrooms with a central kitchen and living area. But again, on small parcels, about three thousand lots. I built about twenty to thirty of those in Eureka back in my early days. And we started building and selling those houses for thirty-nine-nine, topped out at fifty-two-nine, only to have the city create an ordinance that merged all those parcels. I used to refer to as the anti-Kramer ordinance. Now they're wondering where their affordable housing stock is after all the mergers of those parcels. This was a townhouse, townhome kind of design that would also be on some of the small lots. This is more of a view of kind of the multifamily process, projects, and then of mid, mid, mid of the pic, midway on the picture is some of the small lot, single-family residential, more traditional housing, and then the townhouses on the lower half. And then Bill Peckham was the architect and he went kind of crazy on us with a four-story apartment complex on the lots that I pointed out off of Arbutus that gets us right in this area. It was kind of a concept. These are old concepts, and I understand that that things have even changed since we've started recirculating this map and in two thousand and fifteen. But, you know, we're, we're, we're a long ways into this thing and and we still got a lot of hurdles ahead of us with infrastructure that isn't anywhere near this project that we need to figure out how to get built and and put put in place. So that gives you the idea of the project. I guess really where we are now is we have a project before the planning commission. The county, as you're hearing, is, if there's no surprises, in desperate need of all housing types. Your arena numbers show it, and they've been showing it. County was up against HCD and I can't remember what year, two thousand and five, six and seven, and they were bold enough in those days to come out and say they had fifteen thousand shovel-ready parcels. Only after some litigation, some forced discussion, did they realize those numbers were more on the line of about fifteen hundred. One of the projects that John and I just recently worked on was a multifamily conversion from commercial on Hubbard Lane. And the county got behind after those that time and realized that they had, were desperate need of R3 multifamily property. They just didn't have it. They were running around for a long time trying to zone everything R3. It wasn't really a a planning tool. It was more like their pants were on fire and they're just trying to zone everything they could R3. So I think things have calmed down. We've got planners involved now that are looking at Humboldt County and go, where do these things need to go and how do they go? And I think we need all types of housing has been brought up, and I think this project does it. You know, at the end of the day, I'm just hoping to get through tonight and and get an up or down vote and and keep this thing moving. So appreciate your time. If there's any questions, one comment on the on the THP and the timber conversion. We we don't know what's going on with this project, and we certainly didn't know back in two thousand and seventeen. So we were taking a look at the timber stand out there and realizing the market rate was up on timber. So we we filed a timber harvest plan and a conversion plan that took care of the Manzanita piece. If you drive down Manzanita, that development is is effectively built. I have a couple of minor things that have to get done and ultimately approval from public works, you know, final sign-off kind of things. But that development is, the roads in, the waters lines are there. They're not fully energized for other reasons that I don't need to go into tonight. There is a home built on it that I initially built for a member of our family that was coming back from college and is ultimately seated in our our accounting department and in our business. So we needed to find something that could get them settled. We have a lot on either side of that, and that pretty much completes Manzanita. And phase one is that development. And and that would be the first thing we do, and then the rest of this is going to wait until infrastructure and other things get caught up. And that's the reason why we're asking for a twenty-year development agreement. Because I I don't see us breaking ground on that for some time to come unless mountains are moved. And I know housing is needed, so there may be mountains moving. But right now, it doesn't feel like it's going to happen very quickly, so that's why we needed that. But to follow back on the THP, we just did that. We don't know when we're going to need a, you know, a conversion. And it's only good for a certain period of time, so it's not as if I can just go get it and it just lasts forever. Matter of fact, I had conversations with CDF the other day, and they were quick, very clear that if I got a conversion and cleared more acreage than I was prepared to build on, I then had a duty to make sure that that didn't get, no trees would grow on that. Otherwise, I'd have to go back through a process. So it's a regulatory malaise that that, you know, we we're up against. We are currently in an active THP, and we couldn't modify that THP. But the reality of it is that THP turns out in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. And we would, it just stops. It's not as if I would be at any advantage going in and modifying that one. And then come twenty-five, I would just renew it. It's a start-over process. So it's not something we are trying to avoid. And again, we recognize the state mandates, and they're on us, and Alan can attest to that in his world. We, this project can't afford one thing over the state mandates that are already on top of us for compliance with all the various regs that the state of California has been putting out. When you put LID on this project, you put solar on the project, you put fire sprinklers on the project, you put fire-safe house construction on the project. And we, you know, we're trying to build affordable housing and but we're not in this for fun. It's got to be worthwhile and commercial. And it's, we've got work to do, and I'm I'm hopeful that John's going to be there to help me through it. And to date, he's been very supportive. And so with that, I think I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kurt. All right. So can the screen be minimized?
Yeah, I can do that.
So let's open up for some public comment. Hey, Alan.
Yeah.
Is it possible for a five-minute break?
I was thinking that, too. So yeah, let's let's go ahead and do that before we go to public comment. Let's take five minutes and we'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me, Mike.
All right, we ready to go? Back on? All right, welcome back, everybody. And I'm going to open up public comment. And remember, we're going to have a two-minute limit to try and get through this. There's a lot else on our agenda, so. So the first caller. Let's see, how come it's not showing this? Five-two-eight-eight, go ahead.
Hello, Kent Swatzky. I have the privilege of leading this off. This is a fantastic project, probably the one of the best ones I've seen come in Humboldt County in a very long time. Not just because of Mr. Kramer's reputation for doing good projects, but because it's very well thought out. I think all the Ts and Is have very well been crossed. Excellent job by John Ford and his staff on this project. And it's going to be a wonderful place for people to live, families and things in the park-like attitude out there. All the amenities that someone would like to bring children up in or live in as an older adult. So I strongly support this project and I I support you moving forward as quickly as you can. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Kent. I'm having trouble getting my participants to show up. What was that? Pat Carr is next caller, please.
Thanks. I just want to say that I'm concerned about this project's impacts on climate change. We now know how serious the climate crisis is and that we need to take action urgently. Obviously, that's a global issue, but you know, every locale has an obligation to do its share. And our county supervisors have accepted that. They've repeatedly supported the concept of climate action plan that would cut local greenhouse emissions by two thousand and thirty, a cut of forty percent below nineteen ninety levels. But the McKay Ranch will not help us achieve that goal. Electric heat pump, space and water heating using renewable electricity is not part of the plan. Research shows that avoiding natural gas hookup saves home buyers an average of up to five thousand dollars apiece, which is a part of why many California communities are banning new natural gas connections. I am most concerned about the project's transportation emissions since this sector is the largest source of Humboldt's greenhouse emissions. This is a suburban sprawl location with a project design that does little to support safe bicycling, walking, or taking the bus. There are no requirements for EV charging for residential units or in commercial parking lots. What are residents going to do in the year two thousand and thirty-five when California no longer allows the sale of new internal combustion vehicles? I believe the McKay Ranch proposal is made for a bygone era. And I hope that you will agree and reject this project as it currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Josh Pearlson. My list has attendance. It's not showing. Okay, three fifty Humboldt, go ahead.
Thank you very much for the chance to talk to you. There are really a lot of details in this project, and I hope you don't get too wrapped up in them because there's one really big issue. I think only one really big issue, and that is that in Humboldt County, the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions is transportation. So it is puzzling why a developer would propose a project that increases vehicle miles traveled by eleven million miles a year at full buildout. It's even more puzzling why the county staff, which is busy developing a climate action plan, would consider this to be well
Thank you.
dined. Am I done? Is that two minutes?
No, you still have just a little bit.
Thank you.
Oh, that, you have a minute still.
Great. Clearly, you have to determine that the significant impacts on greenhouse gas emissions are, if you want to approve the project, are outweighed by some other benefits. And the main one, I think, is obviously housing. But the problem is that this project doesn't actually provide that much of a cut into what Eureka and the county need, but it doesn't. but it does it in a way that is really old fashioned. It doesn't do infill. I couldn't believe that Mr. Kramer said this is an infill project. We need to go with multiple units placed close to existing services so that vehicle miles traveled are not increased. So I'm hoping that you will recognize that the McKay subdivision is
Your time's up. Got to wrap it up. Thank you. All right, next caller, Stephen Lou. Stephen Lou.
I'd like to state that I'm in support of this project. You know, I see a lot of young professionals or just young families struggling to find places to live. Increasing enrollment in H S U with the new expansion is going to drive further and further more housing demand. One interesting concern I would bring up, and it's not with respect to any environmental impacts, but it's just with respect to equity and parity for people that want to move here and establish a residence here, is that in other states, there are hedge funds that are organizing to purchase entire planned unit developments and make all of the single-family units that are added rentals instead of putting them on the market for families to establish roots and to have a semblance of financial stability with the challenges facing development in the state of California escalating development costs. So I'm in full support of this project, but I wonder if that is the that if these, the units that are being developed would be offered, especially the single-family units, would be offered for sale and not be subject to being developed just for rentals and for vacation rentals, and to truly have them available to establish financial stability for the families that are relocating or that establish residency here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. So switch to, all right. Brian, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's seldom when I hear diverging public comments, but actually agree with all of them. You know, we are in a real crunch in Humboldt County. We have been lacking housing for some time. And if that weren't bad enough, we have the good news slash bad news that the place that brings the most people into this county, Humboldt State, has a plan to double the student population in only a matter of years. And so we have to choose among some negative of these problems. We're either going to increase greenhouse gas emissions, although I would argue that that is the most temporary of the issues based on my comments on, you know, California no longer being able to sell, you know, internal combustion cars in the future. But the other is that we don't build any housing. And that just means that the housing prices go up and up. We have more problems with people experiencing homelessness. And people who have lived here for, you know, five, six, seven generations can't afford to have their children, you know, remain in the area because, I mean, the the cost of a regular four-bedroom home are just absolutely outrageous. And especially when you compare that to what the average wages and salaries are in this area. And for the folks that are saying, no, don't build here, what that actually means is if you look at the housing inventory, we're going to be building in McKinneyville. And when you take a look at where the majority of the jobs are in the county, those jobs are in Eureka. And so I would put out there the notion that putting 30, 40, 50% of the new housing in McKinleyville is actually far worse than not building housing around around the county, especially the county seat, the place where the most jobs are. And so for that, I think that it's great that we're going to be able to be fixing some traffic problems with some of the major problem intersections in that area. Obviously, losing housing funding is not going to make our housing crunch work, or it's not going to make it any better, rather. And while I completely understand why people would say that increasing greenhouse gas emissions is not something that we should be doing, I think it's something that in the short term, we have to do, that it is unfeasible to meet our objectives of increasing housing, decreasing housing prices, and also not increase any greenhouse gases. And with the vast majority of car makers promising all electric fleets by 2030, and this project won't even be completely bid out by then, I would say that's why it does outweigh the risks of increased gas emissions for a short time period so that we can have housing, because we are in, I think the housing crisis is one of the largest facing families and businesses in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Mulder.
So I was going to make a couple of statements here. I can't be part of the no-growth mentality. Population increase is inevitable in Humboldt County with all the other reasons stated tonight, as well as other industry increases. Housing needs are beyond unmet within our county, I feel. I support the ability of sprawl and smart growth for families to have the opportunity to purchase and live in single-family residences. And I feel that the overriding findings outweigh the unavoidable mitigations, or whatever that term is in CEQA. And it was really, really great to hear that it doesn't have to be perfect, and you can approve a project with that. And I see Peggy's hands up and Commissioner Newman's hands up, but I'm prepared to make a motion to approve it, but I want to hear their comments first.
Peggy, and Mike.
In response to the comment by Stephen Lou about the hedge funds buying out everything and renting it, is there any way, Mr. Ford, that you can put, maybe there needs to be an ordinance to, you know, first, but that you can stipulate that these have to be single-family homes and not these out-of-town buyers that came in after 2008 and started buying up everything like in McKinleyville and renting out rooms. And, you know, the actual cost of housing now is off the charts. You know, people lost their homes because they couldn't pay their mortgage, and now they're paying rent and living with multiple families in a house. My house next door, there's probably nine families living in it now, you know, and it used to be a single-family home. So does that have to be an ordinance, or can that be a stipulation that these need to be single-family homes, you know, single families buying them and not out-of-town investors that are, you know, following algorithms to buy up everything they can and just rent it to as many people as they can?
So I think that, through the chair, in answer to your question, Commissioner O'Neill, there's a couple of things going on there. One is that single-family means one family, and a family by law is either an unlimited number of related people or six or less unrelated people. And so if there's a bunch of people, because the house has been rented out to a bunch of different people, that actually is technically a violation of law already. There are some things that can be done from a regulatory standpoint. The renting it out as short-term rentals, that's something we need to address on a countywide basis, and that is something we're working on. Haven't gotten to it fast enough, recognize that. But it is on the shortlist of things that need to be done. I don't know that we can limit the purchase of housing, and say, out-of-town buyers can't buy housing. I need to research that and talk to council about that before making any statement on that, but that seems like that's maybe a step too far.
Well, I know they regulate, like you can't have some Airbnbs and all that because they want to maintain a family atmosphere. I'm just, you know, I'm not talking about out-of-town people that want to buy a house and live here. I'm talking about investors that want to buy up the whole subdivision and just rent it to as many people as they can in a unit. Legally, you could put six people in, you know, a couple of rooms, unrelated, and, you know, make, you know, so then it just defeats the idea that we're trying to provide housing for families, affordable housing for families, or even unaffordable housing. But, you know, I just see this as a trend in the county, and I think it takes away from, you know, people don't take care of their houses as well, because their rentals, they deteriorate. They don't care. They don't mow their lawn, you know. You know, I used to see a lot higher quality, you know, when you have a single family or takes pride in the home that they are working to pay for. You know, if it's not something that we can achieve in this subdivision, which, you know, we can't impose things that aren't legal, but maybe it's something that the county does need to look at to encourage more homeownership. And I'm not saying you couldn't rent a unit. You know, I didn't get a lot of background on how these units are going to be built. Is the developer going to or are they just going to sell the lots? I didn't really hear that, so I didn't really know the whole business plan. It's his business.
Yeah, that's really not specified at this point. And often what happens is that developer may build out the they may sell off certain lots. And that is left really as a business decision here for the developer. That's not part of a plan that's been submitted.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. Sometimes in your mind, you start to vision what things are going to be, and then they don't turn out to be what you think, so just be prepared.
Having to find my unmute button there and also lower my hand at the same time. It takes a moment here with my cursor. Sorry, Chair. Yes. I asked questions. Some of them I knew what the answers would be just for the public's sake, so that things were brought out. But several of the things that I want to bring up here in the staff analysis are big bullet points. And one of them is that this brings up a lot of the problems, just like Mr. Kramer said, we don't need to put our heads in the sand because we do need more housing. I've been part of the HHAC, the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition, for many years now, since my days on the council at the City of Eureka, as well as the City of Eureka, doing planning for family units and that. And this division, this project, really helps alleviate a lot of the problems with housing at all levels. And it just does not have to be affordable housing in the respect that it's subsidized housing in order to get more people put in. But we really do need more housing in general, and this brings up all levels of housing in the subdivision as it's going through the phases. It'll be a slower phase buildout. I like the idea about the traffic lights going into the intersections that are going to be really under a lot of stress. One of the things that we tend to forget about, because we live in this area that is small and rural, is that if you live in the city, as I visit my son in Sacramento, going to point A to point B, there is numerous traffic signals, and most of the time, those traffic signals last for a good, I don't know, three, four minutes. It seems like half an hour, but they're very long before you're moving. So we're very spoiled, I should say, about getting from point A to point B in a quick time. We may have to plan a little bit more ahead of time to leave the house or get someplace else, especially as we go through this area. But Cuthen is one of the areas that is a logical expansion for the greater Eureka area, which does have the biggest job sectors in the county is in the City of Eureka. So I'm in agreement, for the most part, with the mitigations that have been done and how long this has been going on. It's been well thought out. And the level of service change, you know, threw a little curve in there for determining CEQA. But it didn't throw it off base. And I agree with Commissioner Mitchell that, you know, with the state of California urging car manufacturers to not sell gas-powered vehicles by whatever the year is. He said 2030. I can't remember the exact date, but he's probably right. And then the ban now of gas, small gas engines, to just electric, you know, for lawn mowers and all that. That'll take down a lot of the greenhouse emissions. And, you know, as Commissioner Mitchell pointed out, most of the housing has been put up into McKinleyville, and that takes a lot more gas going back and forth to McKinleyville than it does through the greater Eureka area into downtown and such. So I like this plan, and I'm ready, as Commissioner Mulder said, to motion to pass this, but I'm willing to wait as well before making that motion or seconding that motion. So thank you for taking my little speech here. Thank you.
Well, seeing no more hands, I'd say Thomas, it's your big time.
So I'd be ready to make a motion to recommend that the Board of Supervisors certify the environmental impact report for the North McKay Ranch subdivision. And I can't remember the technical term. It was like FERC or something like that that was added to the EIR.
ERATA.
ERATA, okay. And then B, recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Statement of Overwriting Considerations and recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, make all the required findings for approval of the General Plan Amendment, Zone Reclassification, Tentative Subdivision, MAP subdivision, and Planned Unit Development Special Permit and Development Agreement, and approve the North McKay Ranch subdivision project as the revised recommended, oh, as recommended by the staff and subject to the revised recommendations of approval.
Thank you, Thomas.
And I'll And I'll, I'll second now.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? All right, seen none. Suzanne, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Banjo?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you missed one. No, McCaver, she's, she's abstained. She lost her connection. She texted me and said that she lost her connection before she was going to say she was going to recuse herself. So, I think she's going to come back on and explain that, but she, she texted me. So, the, the motion carries six, um, zero with one extension. All right, thank you. Okay, so, wow, we got through one. This brings us to continuing public hearings, and the first one is the Salmonoid Restoration Federation Marshall Ranch Stream Flow Enhancement Project in the Breslin area. And I will take a, um, staff report. And also let Melanie know to come back.
All right, please share screen. All right, can you see it?
Yes, uh, no, just still just...
Share my screen, please.
We have, somebody have to close this.
Still nothing?
Nothing.
Let's see. Yeah, I'm unsure what's, let's see here, there's something on my end. Yeah, I'm unsure, there we go. You see it?
Yes.
All right.
Maybe reduce it a little.
Okay. My name is, uh, Joshua Doris, I'm with, uh, the Planning Department. I'm going to give the brief overview here on the Salmonoid Restoration Federation Project. And basically what it is, um, as you see, it's a special permit, 15661. And, um, a brief project description is, um, it entails the construction of 10 million gallons of upstream water storage and pertinent improvements on the Marshall Ranch located in Breslin, and along with ancillary improvements. And, um, this, this project is sited and designed to fill with, uh, rainwater during the winter wet season and release stored water directly to Redwood Creek during the five-month dry season, and provides increasing flow of approximately 30 gallons per minute to the main stem of Redwood Creek, approximately five-and-a-half-mile stretch from the project site downstream to the South Fork Eel River. And the increased flow is intended to improve in-stream aquatic habitat for Coho, Chinook, and Steelhead by addressing the limiting factor of low flow, of low summer stream flow. And the water storage is proposed in two, two ponds of about 3.5 million gallons and 5.7 million gallons, and five tanks at 100,000 gallons apiece. And like I said, and designed to fill with rainwater and water diverted from two Redwood Creek tributaries during the wet season. And the stored water is also going to be available for domestic ranch and fire suppression ranch use. And ancillary components include an in-stream habitat and bank stabilization structure, erosion control, cooling gallery, a solar array to help offset the, support the operations, upgrading access roads, fencing and associated infrastructure. And, um, a special permit is required for work within the streamside management area. And here's a location map. As you can see, the red indicates the parcel, and I'll mention the parcels, uh, part of the Marshall Ranch, which is an approximately 3,000-acre acre piece of property held under ownership of one, one owner. And, uh, Redwood Creek's off to our, to the west here, flows here. And the project, the ponds are going to be in the northerly part of the parcel here in this open area. And here's, um, here's a site plan. Basically, here's the two ponds, there's the smaller one, the easterly, and the larger one, the westerly, and the diversion's going to occur from two, um, intermittent streams which flow approximately through here. There's going to be a diversion area here, and then the other stream flows approximately through this area, and here's the point of diversion here. The diversion will get pumped to the, pumped to this pond, and in this pond, the small pond gets, has a pipe over to the big pond, and then the outflow to the creek, to Redwood Creek is this, through this area here, and then here's a, um, a gully bank stabilization here to basically, um, control the velocity of the water. And right over here is the, um, in-stream habitat enhancement's going to provide habitat as well as, uh, bank stabilization. In slide, and basically, the, the need for the project, the, um, South Fork Year is listed as one of the five priority watersheds selected for flow enhancement as part of the California Water Plan. And, uh, Redwood Creek is a critical tributary for the South Fork Eel River that traditionally held large amounts of Coho and Chinook salmon and Steelhead. And the project also implements numerous goals of the, of the general plan, including a water resources element and biological resources chapter of the general plan. That's described in the staff report. Again, it implements, there's, uh, numerous components of that that it implements. And, uh, the project's history, the initial design was submitted in September 2019, and the MND was circulated from 11, from November 1st to December 17th, 2019. And that project essentially was one 16-million-gallon pond, and had a direct diversion from Redwood Creek to fill, along with rainwater catchment, and had a large solar, large solar component of it to help offset, to help power the energy, help power the project, excuse me. And then, um, and I should go back, project history, the Salmon Restoration Federation also has been conducting, um, stream flows in Redwood Creek for the past nine seasons, and every year, the, the flow has gotten decreased. So, that's kind of the, the prompt for this project. And then, the second design was submitted in September 2020, and the MND was recirculated from basically October 29th to November 30th of 2020. And then during that 2019 period, um, concerns were raised by downslope landowners that the proposed project may not meet the desired level of long, long-term safety, especially during a rare flood event and high-magnitude earthquake. And so based on these concerns, the applicant, the applicant conducted additional analyses, including further, further evaluation of pond failure, seismic slope stability, analyses under worst-case current and proposed conditions, dam breach analyses, as well as an assessment of long-term operations, maintenance, monitoring costs. And then based on those analyses, numerous significant modifications were made to the 2020 project to ensure long-term stability of the project. And one was lowering the dam height by eight feet, which decreased the volume to about 15 million gallons, um, relocating the pond spillway, installation of a pond liner, French drain, and a subsurface restrictive barrier, grade controls in the main gully, and construction of a seven-and-a-half-kilowatt solar energy system to help offset the, to help offset the cost of the project. And, um, there's, shortly after that, MND was released, there was a project tour scheduled onsite, but due to the wildfires at the time and poor air quality, it occurred via Zoom. That was on September 9th, 2020. And then also in October 9th of 2020, they held a meeting, the applicant held a meeting with the neighbors. And that discussion focused on concerns about the project seismic stability. An additional analysis were requested by, by the neighbors. And as a result of this meeting, the applicant offered to have third-party review of the geologic and tech, geological technical studies and the design plans. And in October 2020, faculty from UC Berkeley reviewed the, um, reviewed the geotechnical tests, and as well, they conducted onsite, onsite slope stability analysis and shear wave velocity analysis. And basically, they concluded that the project is not expected to have a significant effect on seismic stability of the slopes. And, and then, um, in February 25th of 2021, there was another outreach meeting held, and the applicant presented three project alternatives. And, um, there's, of those three, there's a preferred project alternative was the majority of people wanted, and that's the project before you, and that's, um, and there's a few items to note, that the risk of catastrophic pond failure was greatly reduced by breaking the 16, by breaking the 15-million-gallon pond into two ponds of 3.5 million and 5.7 million gallons. And then the current design also allows for a separate but related project up, upstream of Redwood Creek on Lost Coast Forestlands property. So, they're going to have a similar project to, you know, basically a pond, off-channel pond to help, help flow, and then those combined would have the result of 50 gallons a minute of, uh, 50, 50 gallons per minute flow augmentation during those dry summer months. And the current design allows for, uh, gravity-fed, um, gravity-fed diversions and feeding to Redwood Creek instead of versus before, it took some energy to basically pumps and so forth. And then the current projects, the one, again, the one tonight was, um, submitted in August 2021, and the MND was circulated for review from October 22nd to November 22nd, 2021. And, um, I wanted to note, for the record, there's a, um, there's an appropriative water rights application in with the state board, and, uh, and the MND, and there's a slight difference in the diversion season. In the MND, it states December 15th to April 15th is the diversion season, but the appropriative water rights is actually December 1st to April 15th. So, basically two weeks earlier, I wanted to clarify and make that, make that point. And, um, the recommended commission action is to make the motion to adopt the resolution to do the following, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, make the required findings set forth in the resolution, and approve the special permit for the Salmonoid Restoration Federation Marshall Ranch Stream Flow Enhancement Project based on the findings and evidence and subject to the conditions of approval. And that concludes the presentation.
Can you minimize your screen for me, please? Thomas, I see your hand up. Do you have a question for Joshua?
Yes. Just for clarification, I remember reading it, it's been a while since I read it now, but I swear I read something about there was an agreement made that no cannabis, cannabis projects could ever happen on this ranch in the future, was I misreading that as, as a positive?
That was a public comment submit, provided, and they proposed that that be part of the conditions was to basically limit cannabis cultivation in the Redwood Creek watershed. It's not part of the project or associated with the project.
But it's impacted watershed, isn't it?
Um, Director Ford, I, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I believe Redwood Creek is, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, so thank you.
Yes.
Melanie, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that my cellular dropped out as I was trying to recuse from the last project, um, not because my employer's ancestral territory is there, but because I'm within 500 feet of the development, and, uh, FPPC recommends that I recuse. So, I just wanted to say that, get that in there. As for this project, I do have a question. Uh, what is the climate adaptation plan scheduled? So, how often will you recheck to see if you're on track with the current, um, climate change predictions?
As far as for this project?
Yes.
Um, I'm a little unsure what you're, exactly what you're asking.
Well, some of the actions of the, the plan may change depending on what the climate adaptation strategies are recommended to be by, for example, the state or local groups. So, I was just wondering if you had anything in there where you'll go back and take a look and see if the actions of this project are still on track with restoring salmonids, in line with what we expect will happen in the future with flows and all of the other variables?
Well, I know the, um, Salmon Restoration Federation will continue to do, um, salmon, you know, flow monitoring and salmon counts as they do now.
I, I think that the applicant just raised their hand, I think they want to answer that question, so I'll open it up for, uh, Dana.
Thank you, thank you, Alan, and, um, thank you all, uh, Planning Commissioners and Director Ford. Um, I do actually have a, a short presentation prepared, and our, uh, technical lead, Joel Munchke, who's the engineer of this project, is also available. Could I start a share screen, um, to go over some of these items?
Yeah, I, let us, let us, let us finish our questions first, and then I thought you could just answer that question of Melanie's, is why I brought you on.
Oh, no, I didn't understand that. Um, I think Joel could, could answer that better, but that we do have a monitoring plan that's been submitted, um, I believe, as one of the appendices of the Basis of Design Report. And, um, we're, uh, currently in, uh, deep discussions with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State Water Board, and NOAA Fisheries about what the long-term adaptive management is going to look like. Um, and I think Joel might want to, uh, answer some of, uh, that question about the climate change.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, we, we know that this project is going to be adapted, um, as time passes. Honestly, every year, we're likely to have a different, um, you know, different diversion, uh, protocol based on flows, uh, based on rainfall, and then, uh, a different flow, flow release, uh, time period, and, um, you know, duration and magnitude based on, uh, how flows are receding. And so I think, yeah, I mean, that, that, that sort of adaptation is, is built into our, our long-term, um, operations and, and management plan. Uh, we also, you know, there, I think this project is, you know, is a start, but we also recognize that, you know, a lot of other work is needed in the watershed, uh, both by, uh, you know, individual landowners, um, basically everyone living in the watershed to, to store water, reduce water use, um, because the, yeah, long-term projections for, for climate change, longer dry seasons, et cetera, are, you know, not in our favor here.
Thank you. So, the climate adaptation manage, management plan, is that, um, on a schedule?
Um, you know, it's really basically every, every year, um, we're going to be assessing, I mean, the, the diversion season is based on flows, so that's, you know, every year, based on the flow in the creek, you know, we will be modifying when we can divert water to fill, uh, the system. And then every spring, based on the, the recession of the flows, we'll make a new plan for, for flow release, um, for that season. So, yes, it's, it's basically a yearly thing that will go on throughout the operations of the project.
Right. Great, great to hear that you'll be in contact with, uh, CDFW as well. Thank you.
All right. Mike Newman, you're next, and then Noah.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I have a couple of questions, so kind of hinging on what, uh, Commissioner McCaver was asking there. Um, I believe there's a proposed tax-exempt organization to conduct the operation and management of the plant, uh, the water storage and delivery system there. Is that correct, staff? Dana might need to be muted at this point here, Chair.
Yeah, it will be ma, the project will be managed by a 401(c)(3) organization?
501(c)(3).
Yeah, 501(c)(3), rather, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm used to working with nonprofits. So the makeup of that 501(c)(3), is there anything in the details about that?
Um, I'm not aware of the details of that. Perhaps the applicant or Joel could speak to that. I'm not, I'm not a prior.
Let's let them.
Okay, so that'll be a question there. And I'll hinge off of that as a possibility after hearing what what they say then to my question there. Another one is about. Since this uses public monies, I believe, for designing and engineering this whole thing and the construction there. And that there's water availability for fire suppression. Will there be any amount of water set aside for fire department exclusively? And will the fire department be open at any time or does arrangements need to be made ahead of time for access? We've got some background there. Joel, maybe? I see he's unmuted or not muted, so.
Yeah, so I I do have a.
Joel, I'm just asking these questions as the Chair said, so just kind of jot them down and you can answer and evolve. Okay, but you need to mute yourself in the background. Thank you. Last question that I have.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, last question that I have is there's supposed to be a technical advisory committee. Formed and their suggestions, I think in the language here in the. Staff report, I didn't see anything about a local resident being named on that. Committee, perhaps that could be part of the. The request on this approval. So I'm just putting that out there to ask the. The owner of this project, if that is at all possible. And maybe it could be a condition of approval. So those are my three questions.
Then we got Noah and they want to do a presentation, then we'll let them answer, maybe before their presentation, they can answer any questions that have been asked.
Thanks. I'll just be really quick. This isn't a question, but it's just a disclosure I wanted to get on the record. That I was involved about five years ago in the very early stages of the development of this project. That's when I was employed by the landowner, the Marshall Ranch, as the conservation conservation consultant to help them get a conservation easement. On their ranch. And so I worked with the California Rangeland Trust and it was designed, the easement was designed to accommodate this project. I'm a big fan of the project, but I just wanted to put it out there that I was involved with the landowner at an early stage of this project. But I haven't been employed by them for about four or five years.
Thank you. So seeing no other hands. If the applicant would like to respond to any of those questions and then give their presentation.
Joel, do you want to start by? By addressing any of the technical questions or do you want? You start. One thing I would like to clarify is we've been operating with a technical advisory committee for, I think, six or seven years now. With representatives from the regional water boards, CDFW, NOAA Fisheries. And a couple of local appointments. And I, you know, we've been working with a TAC that is, you know, independent and providing technical guidance. And I think, you know, in principle, we're amenable, you know, to continuing that. And and we have sought public input. In several, you know, arenas, you know, public meetings, stakeholder meetings and so forth. Joel, do you want to unmute yourself?
Sure. So perhaps I can. Give I some of these items are addressed in a brief presentation that I put together. Does that with that?
Okay, go ahead and do your presentation and then there'll probably be more questions that are that get asked after that.
Okay. So I think. You know, I just I wanted to focus on kind of the some of the long-term operations. And so. The plan is to have a 501(c)(3) that is. You know. Responsible for the long-term operations, but they're really, you know, they're they're really going to be more of a a pass-through organization. That that will be receiving funding from foundation and others. And then subcontracting to, you know, the Salmonid Restoration Federation, Stillwater Sciences, which is the. The science and engineering firm that I work for and and other subcontractors. And then, you know, that, there will be a lot of oversight of this whole process. Via the the technical advisory committee. Is the the group that Dana mentioned, which includes, you know, regulatory and funding agency staff. Primarily, and then, you know, just this project is going to have, you know, a bunch of permits that we're operating under. County permits, state permits, you know, water board, state and and regional, CDFW, federal permits, et cetera. So, you know, really, the 501(c)(3) is is a small part of this, really kind of a. Associated with the landowner and, you know, allowing funds to be directed for the long-term operations of this project. And then. You know, kind of some of the the long-term, you know, we we've kind of, we've put together a budget for some of these long-term operations and maintenance costs. You know, which are, you know, somewhere in the range of $700,000 over a 20-year period. Again, this is. Some some estimates, but that's that's what we're looking at. You know, some of the other comments that came up were related to. You know, what does this project look like in the long term? You know, do we, do we need to have a decommissioning plan, et cetera? And, you know, we feel very strongly that that is not appropriate for this project. You know, as I acknowledged in an earlier response. You know, adaptive management is highly likely, but restoration projects don't typically require decommissioning plans. And so, you know, even if the flow enhancement objective is not not being achieved. You know, having this pond function as, you know, water storage, winter water catchment for fire suppression. Is going to be critical, you know, as long as we have, you know, humans living in this watershed. And then to the question about fire, water availability for fire. You know, just to be clear, the primary purpose of this project is flow enhancement. You know, we will have a minimum of 50,000 gallons in a tank available for fire suppression. That is a part of the appropriative water right. So that is, that water is designated. I think, you know, the the landowner and the rest of the project team are, we are. You know, very amenable to. You know, agreements with the local fire department as far as accessing that water. And then, you know, to add, there is going to be a lot of emergency water available. So this is water that's in the pond that will be available for, you know, for CAL FIRE and the local department. You know, in the case of an emergency, the easiest way to get that will be, you know, dipping with a helicopter. But some of that could also be, you know, pumped out of the ponds in the case of an emergency. And so this is kind of, you know, based on standard operating, though, there will be, you know, still six and a half million gallons in the pond on. You know, beginning of August, and you can see here, you know, it decreases by approximately a million and a half gallons every month. And so even in the beginning of October, you know, we'll still have 3 million gallons available. And, you know, there the water really cannot be. Transferred or sold from this project. It's very clearly clear in the appropriative water rights and it's clear in. In the Marshall Ranch Conservation Easement, that's that's just not allowed. As far as the the question about having a local from Breslin on the technical advisory committee. You know, I think that's, you know, we we have, there are a lot of local people on that already. You know, I I live in South Dakota, my kids go to school in Breslin. You know, the the landowner, the ranch manager for the Marshall Ranch is on that. He lives in Redway. We have a representative from the regional water board who lives in Redway as well. And or somewhere in Southern Humboldt locally. And so, you know, we're we're open to it, but we also. You know, want to be clear that that the primary objective here is flow enhancement. And so, yes, we build a lot of fire suppression pieces into this. And but we we also don't want to. Yeah, we we want, we want the project to, you know, meet the objectives. And so. I will just leave it at that.
So any other questions for Joel while we have him here? Thank you, Joel. So seeing no more hands up, I will open this up for, oh, I guess you got your hand back up. Go ahead.
Well, based on that presentation and the mention about 50,000 gallons being set aside. Is there somebody on staff that can address how much that is for fire suppression? For a fire department or for a wildland fire there in that area?
50,000 gallons of water is, what is that, about a sixth of an acre foot? I don't know how much those, the the planes, the buckets that they fill up are, how many loads that would be, I'd be speculating at that point.
Well, as I said, with the public monies involved there, I'd like to see something more. Set aside there for use of the fire department for that area. Because that's what it would be used for, as well as for, then of course, helicopters and and that sort of thing for dipping out of the pond. But I would, I would hope that there would be something more about fire suppression, especially given what we've been going through the past five years. Great state of California here.
Cliff, go for, go ahead, Cliff.
Thank you through through the Chair. Just, I was just doing a little bit of sleuthing on the internet, but it looks like the typical. Firefighting planes can hold up to 12,000 gallons. And and that that could be applied over a four to six acre area. So, you know, you would figure that'd be roughly. Three or four. You know, opportunities for something like that to to come in and and take the 50,000 gallons. I don't know if that helps.
Well, it it just sounds pretty low to me.
So one of the things, just from an objective standpoint. And and this was talked about with the last project, and sometimes there are competing demands. And the funding for this really is for improved flow. And so water that's set aside for fire purposes within these ponds, as desirable as that may be. Reduces the amount of water that's available for a fish passage. So I I think that's the tension that we're facing here.
I've got both the applicant and Joel, so whichever one of you wants to speak up to it.
Yeah, so I'll I'll go ahead here. Yeah, just to be clear, you know, the 50,000 gallons is in a tank. That will be available for, you know, in a hydrant for fire trucks. The ponds themselves will be available to helicopters to dip. And those, you know, there, as I showed on that, on the one, on one of the slides in my presentation. You know, there will be 3 million gallons in those ponds available at the beginning of October. And so I think, you know, there is. Going to be a lot of water available for fire suppression that is not. You know, for emergency fire suppression, but it's not, again, it's not the primary objective of this project. You know, the funding for this project is coming from the California Wildlife Conservation Board. Which is, you know, specifically has a streamflow enhancement program. And so that is where, you know, the funding for the design has been come, came from. And it's where we're we're likely to get the majority of the implementation funds for. I think there's, there's a lot of other opportunity for additional water storage in Breslin and the surrounding community. Through other funding sources that are are more focused on fire suppression.
So one last part question on that is. What constitutes emergency approval? Is that something that the CAL FIRE has available? And that would be a quick phone call or they just come and appropriate?
My my understanding is that they just come and appropriate, come and appropriate. And so the the idea would be they come and appropriate. And then we're going to have to, based on how much they take, we would have to readjust our release schedule for the rest of the year. Based on that significantly reduced volume and and, you know, talking to the agency staff with CDFW, that that exact question has come up and they, you know, they say, well, you know. If if there's a fire and CAL FIRE comes and takes water, yes, we're okay with you releasing less water because, you know, the fire takes precedent.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? We're going to open this up for public comment. Joan Courtois, your first caller. Two minutes, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening. This is the first time the Marshall Ranch Streamflow Enhancement Project has come before the Planning Commission for consideration. Although this project has been proposed and been in the design and planning stages for quite some time. My name is Joan Courtois and my home and my office and property adjoin the property line of the Marshall Ranch. And is the most closely affected property to this project. The first proposal was an Erdinberm 16 million gallon reservoir to be located approximately 200 feet away. And constructed on the geomorphic terrace 80 feet above my property. This proposal created a threat to my family's lives and a great concern for the property damage a catastrophic failure would cause. Thankfully, many environmental and community members spoke out against this original plan. And it has now been redesigned with a smaller pond on the upper terrace. And a secondary larger pond upstream on a lower terrace. We appreciate that our concerns have been heard and that steps have been taken to redesign and address these issues raised. What I've had to go through over the past three years in voicing my concerns with this project has been traumatic and upsetting. So now, even though I do support this new design proposal, I still have unanswered questions and concerns regarding the design and operational and management plans of this project. regarding the design and operational and management plans of this project that I would like the Planning Commission to address. Please refer to my previous comments submitted for more in-depth detail. The county has designated this project as a major project under its own classifications of projects proposed. I assume the county has given this a special designation due to the size and significant environmental impact this project will have. This is a major project, and it will forever be altering and changing a pristine geologic feature from its natural state. The issues I have raised in my previously submitted public comments have not been adequately addressed in the project proposal or the staff report. I would like the commission to address these specific issues and that you consider adding these as conditions of approval to this project proposal. These are, who in the county will oversee this project from construction throughout the life and of operations and management of this project?
Your time is up, ma'am. I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you. Uh, next caller is Dawn Allen.
Hi, uh, yeah, my name is Dawn Allen. I'm a resident of West Haven, and I'm the president of the Salmonid Restoration Federation and a watershed restoration practitioner for more than forty years. And I've seen our fisheries resources decline dramatically over the last forty to fifty years. And I've seen the watershed restoration mature and grow over that period of time, to the point where we are spending millions of dollars a year uh, to try to restore salmon habitat. I've also seen the growth of the cannabis industry and the increase in water use that has resulted in creeks drying up in the summer. And one of the most basic tenets that everyone understands is that fish need water. For Coho Salmon and Steelhead, the critical time is during the summer low flows because they spend a year or more in freshwater before migrating to the ocean. That is also the peak water extraction period for cannabis growers. And even though the county and other regulatory agencies have required the cannabis growing protects stream flows, the increase in the rural population means increased domestic water use and decreased water available to keep the creeks flowing. Add to this climate change with decreasing precipitation in hotter summers, and we have the conditions that are threatening to drive salmon and trout to extinction. So we need more projects like the Marshall Ranch Project, which will store winter water, winter rainfall in a well-engineered and carefully planned pond that will then be released during the dry season to keep Redwood Creek flowing and provide the critical habitat that Coho and Steelhead need. The project has been modified to address the neighbors' concerns. It has been studied and engineered by one of California's most reputable engineering and scientific firms in Stillwater Sciences. I encouraged you to approve this permit application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Katrina Nystrom. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Um, my name's Katrina Nystrom. I grew up in Southern Humboldt in the south work of the Eel Watershed. I completed my master's thesis in environmental science at HSU in twenty twenty. And part of my research for my master's thesis was doing stream flow monitoring on Redwood Creek in twenty nineteen. Um, and I've been continuing doing the stream flow monitoring for SRF through twenty twenty-one. And twenty nineteen, I found in my research that the flows went down what we, below what we call section control or the level where um, the flow stops. You start getting that, you stop getting that mixing from pool to pool. Um, but twenty, and, and you stop getting like really good dissolved oxygen rates. Um, but twenty nineteen was a really, uh, much better year than the next two years, right? Twenty twenty seems like a really dry year. And then twenty twenty-one, it was just, it was really sad, actually, just all the um, there was so much Coho in the spring and then just watching all the pools full of Coho just completely dry up. Um, so I really support this project from my science background and as a community member, um, growing up with salmon in my life. Um, I would really like to see some flow enhancement happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next call is Jim Courtois. There. There you go.
Yeah, am I not, am I on? Okay, okay. Um, I'd like to cede my time to Joan Courtois, who has been a major spokesman in this process, and I'd like to essentially assign and leave the floor here and have you unmute Joan so she can take my remaining time, please.
She can have the, the rest of your two minutes. Go ahead.
Well, well, I, I, you're not allowing, you're not, can I put Joan on instead?
Yeah, for the minute and a half that's left, yes.
Sure, go ahead, Joan, do it. Is she unmuted?
I don't know. I'm not hearing her.
Yeah, me either. Okay, anyway, uh, let me just say to you that this is a major project and she's a major player in it. And I say that, unfortunately, I have to say that as a lawyer who um, has done environmental law over a great many years. And it's a due process question, procedural as well, stuff that is raised by creating a hole by not allowing Joan to speak. So there you have it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, can I speak the rest of the time that's available?
Why don't you just start over? Just go ahead, Joan, and now you give your two minutes.
Okay, what I would like to do is continue that I would like to see an expanded design plan showing a birth-to-death conceptual rendering of the life of this project. I think that's necessary. A financial plan, funding and a proposed budget that goes beyond a twenty-year scope. The water availability for the fire department, I think this needs to be addressed. The Marshall Ranch needs to be prohibited from selling or transferring the water collected or stored. That needs to be part of the agreement. Um, the Technical Advisory Committee absolutely must consist of one, at least one local resident of the town of Breslin, not just somebody from the Southern Humboldt region. Uh, the proposed tax-exempt organization, the Bible One C three, uh, this also, a seat on the Board of Directors must be granted for a local Breslin resident. Uh, the Moratorium on Cannabis Permits in Redwood Creek Watershed, I think that that uh, really absolutely needs to be addressed in an overall way of looking at the, the, the effects of cannabis in the watershed. And finally, the notification of any changes or alterations to the plans. There's been numerous design and plan changes discussed and presented during the course of the project. Um, and I must assume that there will be more changes if this is allowed to be uh, allowed to move forward. Because this project has such a direct effect on my property, I would like to be notified in writing of any further design changes or plan revisions submitted. And I would appreciate the commission taking the time to thoroughly review this project, the proposal, and add into this the conditions I've adjusted.
Hey Chair, point of order, I believe this lady already spoke.
I, I was granted, we had uh, receded time by, by another person, and I was allowed to have that extra time. So we are all called to be stewards of this earth, and we do need to be mindful of the steps we take.
Ten seconds left.
We leave behind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next caller, Tasha McKee McPorter.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Tasha McKee, and I grew up in the Matole Watershed, which neighbors the Redwood Creek Watershed. And I've been working on stream flow enhancement since um, the year two thousand and two, and we are developing a lot of projects that are very similar. And I've learned that we need to do the same strategy with ponds, um, with a pipe to put flow into the river. Um, climate change has resulted in the streams drying up for all of wildlife, it's not only fish and for people. And we, we're really working on culture change in the Matole Headwaters with people changing their water use and storing water from the winter to use during the summer, and also groundwater recharge and also up slope ponds um, for direct flow enhancement in the late summer. And we're finding with many years of scientific experimentation with many technical partners that the only thing that helps in the late summer is these up slope ponds with a, a pipe. So we very much support this approach, and we're very proud of everyone in the Breslin community, um, Redwood Creek community and the project proponents for revising uh, the plan and addressing all of the concerns and coming up with what we think is a really sound plan that will have a high likelihood of success. So we would like to express our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is five two eight eight. There you go.
Oh, I'll be very brief here. It sounds like a wonderful project. They like to see some more projects. Just so the public knows, I've never seen, unlike the coastal commissioner places, we don't see time here in the Planning Commission. Maybe some people understand that. I haven't seen that happen in supervisor chambers or this. Uh, hopefully we'll have a lot more of this. Hopefully other places within the state will learn from this. And uh, especially the people down south are taking the Eel River water can learn from this particular one, and maybe they can store water in the off season rather than pumping the Eel River over the hill down there into the Russian River. So thank you, opportunity, kudos, and hope we get a bunch more like this.
Yeah, uh, next caller, seven four two nine.
Um, hi, good evening. This is Robby Tenorio with Citizens for Sustainable Humboldt, and we support this project. Um, it will restore critically important habitat by enhancing stream flow. Um, it just seems like um, it's needed throughout our watersheds. And I'd like to thank the applicant, the Salmonid Restoration Federation, and the neighbors and the Marshall family for working together for so long, and I know through some very difficult times to develop a really good restoration project that also increases the community's access to water for fire suppression. So um, I really encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Oh, seven, I guess there is one more. Three eight two five, public three eight two five. I guess there is no hand up, you're right. Okay, so seeing no more, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. And Thomas has his hand up.
I apologize, Chair, for point of ordering, but I, that was the same lady that spoke way earlier, so that's why I was calling point of order.
Thank you, I got it. I was getting, starting to think it too. So does anybody have any questions or anything, or somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brian. I think it just sounds by and large a fabulous project and one we can hope to see many more of in the future. And as such, I would move approval of the item.
I would, I would second that motion enthusiastically.
Any further discussion on it? None. Suzanne, a roll call vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, motion carries seven zero. So we're at a little after nine, and uh, what do you think? Let's go for it. Okay, we're gonna start uh, the next item, which is Rainbow Cell Storage Coastal Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit. And it takes a staff report.
All right, uh, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Robbie Thacker, contract planner, presenting the Rainbow Cell Storage Project. Uh, the subject site is located approximately three hundred feet north of the intersection of Harris Street and Hubbard Lane within the Eureka Myrtle Town area. Uh, the site is approximately one point eight four acres in size, and it's comprised of three parcels. Uh, the site is split zone, commercial, general, and neighborhood commercial. Uh, the site was previously developed with the former uh, lumberyard retail store. The site contains uh, no underdeveloped or natural habitat areas and is improved with existing buildings and a parking lot. Uh, surrounding development of the site consists of residential homes, a church site, and a commercial property. The project proposal, uh, the entitlements request with this project are coastal development permit, which consists of a second, second story additions to the existing building on the site and increasing the building uh, square footage from thirty thousand eight hundred and sixteen square feet to forty one thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet, and constructing uh, two new storage buildings, uh, totaling twenty-four thousand square foot for one and another one at sixty-five hundred square feet. Uh, there will be approximately four hundred and fifty storage units uh, that are planned for build-out with this site. Uh, the project will also include uh, striped customer parking spaces and the installation of a gravel stormwater retention area at the rear of the site. Here's the site plan. Um, the northern portion of the site uh, contains the existing building that will have the uh, additions to it added on for additional storage lockers. And the two new storage buildings will be located to the south of that building uh, in the middle and between the drive aisles and at the southern portion of the site. The site will utilize the existing driveways on Hubbard Lane uh, that will be reconstructed to city standards. And that will provide access to the internal drive aisles that will be at least thirty to forty feet wide, along with twenty-nine customer parking spaces provided. Uh, the western boundary of the site will accommodate the drainage retention area as well. Uh, the buildings will be set back from the front property line by ten feet, uh, five and six feet on the sides and fifteen feet and eighty feet, depending on which building is in the rear for the new structures. And then here's uh, just some elevations of the proposed buildings. Uh, along the main roadway Hubbard Lane will have enhanced facade areas uh, along the street. And then here are your typical elevations for the storage locker buildings. Uh, here's some visual perspectives from Hubbard Lane, uh, looking north towards the existing site. You can see the existing vacant building. Here's a view looking south on Hubbard Lane. And then here's uh, looking west toward the site directly. So some key items with the project, uh, project was reviewed and is found to be consistent with the uh, commercial general land use designation and general plan policies associated with that. The site is suitable for the proposed development and the proposed intensity as a storage facility and will support the surrounding development and residential uh, population that serves. The site is compatible with the surrounding land uses and has adequate utilities and access to the site, and will be served by public services. Uh, the site is located within the urban limit line of the Myrtle Town area and is not any natural resource area and will not affect existing visual resources within the county. Additionally, the project is not located near coastal access points and will not result in the reduction of public access to the coast. Uh, the project was reviewed for traffic and circulation, um, and was found uh, to be less than significant. Uh, information provided by the applicant on a similar sized project resulted in estimated average daily count of only nineteen trips per day on their busiest time of the year. Uh, additionally, Public Works has reviewed the project and recommended approval uh, with their standard conditions and the reconstruction of the existing driveways. In terms of sequel review and initial study and negative declaration was prepared for the project and found that there to be a less than significant impacts. Uh, the site does not contain any sensitive habitat or special species that would need to be mitigated, as the site has been previously developed with commercial use. Uh, moving on to the considerations for the conditional use permit for the storage use. Uh, staff finds that the proposed use to, uh, meets the fines, required findings for approval. Uh, the use will have limited hours of operation from seven AM to nine PM. Uh, will have a relatively low traffic demand, as I mentioned. Uh, will provide all indoor storage onsite. And is a compatible use for the surrounding development, uh, given the one and uh, two-story building sizes compatible with the surrounding area. The orientations of the buildings facing Hubbard Lane and uh, the existing access from, from Hubbard. Uh, and is also a less intense use than what was previously used on the site as retail. A site will be fenced with a six-foot security fence, and access will be controlled by uh, security gates at the entryway. Uh, each storage locker door will also have electronic security system that is monitored twenty-four seven. The business also employs video surveillance and recording that there's all their sites and will plan to at this one. Uh, there's no office on, on the site and all rental agreements are conducted online while staff can, can be on site to assist customers if there's an issue. And they have a central office, a different location that oversees operations at all their various locations, including, uh, this one. Terms of agency and public comments, uh, all reviewing departments recommend approval of the project with, and provided standard conditions of approval. And there was no public comments received for the project. And recommendation, uh, staff recommends, uh, commission adopt the initial study and negative declaration prepared for the project and approve the conditional use permit and coastal, coastal development permit for the Rainbow Self-Storage Project with the recommending conditions of approval, uh, in the staff report. And with that, that concludes my presentation for this item. Um, available for questions, the applicant is also, uh, in, attending as well to answer questions. Thank you.
Can you reduce your screen, please?
Here, I just want to clarify something real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
The recommendation needs to be to adopt the initial study and negative declaration.
Yes, sorry, I said that verbally. Um, I think, yeah, my slide has an error in there, apologize.
All right, anybody, commissioners have questions? Thank you, Robbie. Um, I will now open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this one back to the commission. Your thoughts? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
I'm ready to move, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
That's what I was gonna do, Noah.
Okay.
I was trying to raise my hand, but go ahead.
You went to the trouble of raising your hand, so you should have the honors.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Well, I'd like to, uh, find that there's no substantial evidence that the project will have significant adverse impact on the environment and adopt the negative declaration prepared per SEQUID Guidelines Section fifteen oh seven four. Make the required findings for approval of the coastal development permit and cond- conditional use permit and approve the Rainbow Self-Storage Coastal Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit as recommended by staff subject to any recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Melanie, so we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? And Suzanne, I'll ask you for a roll call vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Looks like it carried, carried seven zero, so gets that one off. I don't believe we have time to start another one, so we're gonna need to have a motion to, to continue items three, four.
Three through nine.
Three through nine, yeah.
And, and items H one and two and G one.
Well, motion to continue three through nine, item H one and two and item I, which was the workshop.
So moved.
I'll second.
You have a motion second to continue those items. Any further discussion?
Is that a date certain with the motion?
Yeah, to the, to the, uh, January twentieth, twentieth meeting.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, anything else that anybody wants to bring up or the director wants to?
I would, uh, just bring up that the letter that the planning commission wrote to the Board of Supervisors is, uh, on the agenda for Tuesday, the eleventh. Um, I don't have a time on that, but, uh, it is on the agenda.
All right, thank you for doing that. Anything from the commission? All right, well, seeing no more. We'll call this meeting adjourned and we'll see you all on the twentieth. Have a good two weeks.